So whatever you say, something.
Good evening, everybody. Today is Tuesday, it was Tuesday, Wednesday, May 4th. It is 7:02 PM. We'll start, stand up, do the pledge of allegiance and get the meeting started. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with a routine justice for all. Okay, I'd like to have a load of silence to all the military, firefighters, road workers, and sheriff's deputies. It's a civil community here in Aurora. Thank you. Can we have a roll call vote, please?
Trustee McLaughlin.
Present.
Trustee McQuire.
Present.
Trustee Matt.
G D O is coming in. Okay, so the first thing on the agenda is review and approval of party minutes. Just asking about the beginning of meetings, I just typed them today. You a chance to look at this, my chance to look?
Nope.
So, does anyone want to table it?
I'm not gonna, I wasn't doing meetings, so I'm not gonna go down there. So, it's up to you.
You don't have to go down there. Okay, so...
Can you bring those back like that? Can we go at the next meeting on Thursday or next week?
Yeah.
I'm still...
Okay, so we'll table the meetings. About to do any meeting minutes, it's tied.
Would you like...
Okay, uh, next, next is the physical office report. Table is yours, Tracy.
First of all, I'd like to ask a question. Would you like those minutes reviewed before the next meeting? Or would they stay like that?
Nope, no good.
Okay. Right, next, go, go ahead. So... I gave you guys a copy just passed that down on the financial report. I know you just got it, so... You can review it and ask me questions later. I put copies out of the summary, for the citizens on the table. There's been no bills done this week because there's been action and nobody replying back. No normal bills replying back, on many, so I haven't put out a set of bills, but there will be some in the mailbox before the end of this week. Today is Wednesday, so I expect them to be there. No, they're done Friday. Maybe tomorrow. For you to sign. There is one purchase order and one and two payroll in the mailbox. I think Trustee McLaughlin has signed one payroll. Monthly payrolls in the box. You have to work on getting purchase orders done before we make purchases. You have to work on getting mine item number so I can make purchase orders. So I know what to apply because the purchase orders include blanket certificates, super blanket certificates, then and now purchase orders. You see all those things and that names in the audit?
Yes.
So when I say purchase orders, I'm including all those. Whether I put all purchases or just...
But if white P O's from one vendor?
No, no, purchase orders from one vendor.
Purchase order from one vendor.
Blanket orders for several vendors out of the same line item. And it should be for a period of time because we do it for the whole year and then you might need some of that money for another one you won't have. You can't use it, you can't use that line item anymore. So you may want to do it quarterly, a blanket certificate. You may want to do it quarterly.
Blanket?
Yes, a blanket certificate. Purchase order being used, because we know what, we know what their estimate of what their whole year bill is gonna be. The one you were just talking about, car bill. Car bill, we, we gave estimate so we can do a purchase order for car bill because we knew what our whole year kinda gets, what our whole year amount is gonna be because you order how much you need, right? So we knew how much on that. So that's what a purchase order is about.
So, but the car bill though, if we don't take all the tons that were contracted for accredited, are we gonna get billed for that amount whether we take it or not?
We'll get billed for whatever we take over the month.
Because you signed up a contract for that amount.
It's actually eighty percent of your contracted amount. But hopefully they would do without that because they had issues, they had issues with salt this year. So I was hoping maybe that hurt the great body, another city that haven't, that haven't buy salt. So I was hoping they let us out of it, and they didn't.
When it comes to the ways, if the price gets jacked or covered, I mean, it's impossible to predict that.
Correct, yeah, that's true.
You figure with, the way diesel is right now, the trucking prices for that are gonna impact the price.
Okay, so, anything else?
No, um, no, unless you guys have any more questions, no, nothing else.
Uh, I think motion to accept the physical office report.
Second.
Can we have a roll call vote, please, Tracy?
Trustee McLaughlin.
Yes.
Trustee McQuire.
Yes. Okay. Under old business, I don't have anything, but I think I was going to put there, I put on the agenda for the work session. Is there anything there anymore that you want to talk about yet?
Uh, we talked about excellent part, so you're gonna get a resolution for City Dayton for that?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. All right. And that's just, that's something that came up in the conversation about the bulk trash day. Which I'll get into that once we get into the business.
Okay.
Can I ask a question? On that, do, do you have an address on which you can send the trash to or I'm gonna give you a resolution to get to him? Will he have the information put in the resolution so that I know where I have to send that in the night? The resolution, because Fred Stovall usually needs a copy of the resolution, his secretary will come in and ask for that resolution.
Yeah, I mean, I would have Mr. McLaughlin get that worked out. That was kind of a passing thing while he had communication going with us. Because that project, he was working with Wolf prior to that on that issue, so... I think we gotta commit yes or no for sure.
Yeah, I'll do that. Now, I talked to him, he said, I asked him before, are they doing any utility work beforehand?
I don't know, but the one thing, but the reason he wants an answer out of us is some communication that they're sending out to all the residents. So, uh, I don't know if they're omitting the addresses in this mix or what logistics of that, or I just thought to have him update the numbers so that we get it ended meeting for tonight.
Okay. Any other new business?
Is this old business that you just handed me? This application or this something?
The only discussion, the meeting has an application for auto supply store. You know, I talked about that before.
Uh, yeah.
The only information I could fill out, how I saw you, the only information I could fill out was what you're, you're the tax exempt stuff and then your financial stuff there.
Guaranteed payment, so it doesn't need this property on which you're putting in to locate it?
Yeah.
All right, and...
So, any new business? Recontacted, uh, we talked about, I talked about, new business I have, more key fogs, we already talked about that. Do we want to just tell H S I okay on the one and only, or do people shop around there? I don't, I have no idea where to shop. Do you?
I mean, uh... I mean, we can order through them and have them give us the spec to reorder them again, but as far as I know, our relationship is still good with H S I.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
So, uh... They're gonna require a P O upfront before they order them, but other than that...
They're looking at the price from what I'm seeing on Amazon, so... Okay. So, any other new business?
Uh, only new business is discuss the bulk trash day.
Okay, that's Friday.
Okay. You've seen email traffic. If you get any calls, we're not accepting tires with that.
Send it an email, a lot of people, just send an email, okay?
Yeah. Basically, when in doubt, go to the City Dayton guidelines for bulk trash. Brush needs to be four feet. Everything needs to be separated. But you don't have to call for an appointment now. For the audience, one of the things that we negotiated this new contract is twice a year, like other communities, you can put it out by the curb and they'll pick it up without an appointment. They didn't, Dayton didn't give us a lot of notice. I wanted this toward the end of May, the first install for this, but it's gonna be this Friday. The sheriff is helping us with the P R piece and they've got it out on Nextdoor and there's another posting going out on Facebook to help with participation. Dayton doesn't know what to expect since we've never been through this. If we get overwhelming response, they have a second day for their crews planned to catch anybody they didn't pick up. But I'm not gonna advertise, they're gonna be checking it again Saturday. They originally thought about doing it on Saturday, but Solid Waste is only open till three and they, again, they don't know what, what the volume of material could be. It could be huge. On that there.
So when, so what you're saying is if we put out bulk trash and Friday is not picked up, just leave it there because they'll probably come back on Saturday?
They said they were gonna come through and double check everything, but it just all depends on whether or not to get it cleaned sweep. But if you've got stuff sacked ten feet high on every street, they're not gonna be able to work through it. Just depending on how quickly they fill up the trucks.
That already scheduled bulk trash, then I saw that come out.
Do you believe in regular City Dayton trash day, do you support it?
It's a, it's got like a thirty yard dumpster with a claw.
Yes, yeah, that's right, yeah. Not a regular dumpster, okay, a nut, right, a tractor.
It's kinda cool, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, I've seen it before.
No appliances for freon, but they'll take metal appliances too. We tried, did that, but Solid Waste wouldn't accept it at the county.
And, and, and you take a freezer to the recycling yard, you gotta have a paper, paper trail to show that you had that freon done legally.
No, uh, Solid Waste does a promotion every year of tires where they're paying people to show up with tires, so that's kinda covered. But we will have a fall installment that we can schedule and we'll be able to learn from how this went, how far I had planned and so forth, then we'll see. Technically speaking, our residents aren't used to having a bulk garage, right?
Right.
But I'm hoping that gives everybody a chance to cleanse stuff they've been meaning to get rid of, but didn't get around to calling Dayton. So...
I've seen plenty places to fuck more children.
That misses what it got to those people who need to be cleaned.
Well, I appreciate that, Jim. I appreciate you taking that effort. Okay, so any other new business?
I don't know if you wanna discuss this P U C L stuff, or we just get together after the, sometime after...
We need to make this, we just decided, there's something to decide, we want to get, we...
Review it and see if you're comfortable signing it. But there's a fine for Trebell if they're late with it and it's more headache and more paperwork, so we're kinda take a look at it and see if you're okay with it. I'm okay with signing it, you know, they explained it to me.
Yeah.
Tracy has to notarize the paperwork.
I just need you guys to sign. All I'm doing is notarizing her signature. It has to be done in front of me.
The other, the other issue while we're on Trebell, if you wanna look at that while I'm talking...
Does the company run out of business?
Well, no, we've got, under our aggregation, which is approved by voters, we've got electric contract and we've got a gas contract.
Right.
The gas supplier filed bankruptcy. And their contract is up and gonna need to be renewed in October anyway, so it's not a big, big deal. But what Trebell is concerned with is right now, gas prices have tripled over what a lot of the contracts are locked in at. He's expecting it to come down as we get closer to October. But the volatility in the energy market right now got, got them concerned. Same goes for electric. Are, this aggregation is gonna pay well for the residents that are in on it because they're locked in at like four cents, four or five cents a kilowatt hour, I think. The market right now is a twelve and a half cents. So, uh, it'll help the people that are in aggregation right now on that there, but contract time comes up for that, that could change. But the bankruptcy, it's may cause some confusion, it may cause some phone calls, but Trebell is on top of it and advises, you know, they'll be in, in the fall to, to present options on, on the way to go.
So in the future, who will the email be sent to? You, Jim? Because now that they would be sent to, who will they be sent to now? They, they know that...
I think they just called me because they knew, knew me to call. But that email, I think the email you're holding, one to Wolf's email. You got a copy, so if you wanna look at that, let's deal with that if we can.
Okay. That was the only other thing I wanted to bring up.
So you want to sign that?
Yeah.
You wanna...
You gonna pass it down?
There's two, there's three places, I think.
Do you have to leave it up to you, too?
Applicant, I think that, notarized. It just says signature of applicant, or so, applicant's signature, but you're not, there's three places. Should I check them before? So you always compare them especially, you know, where they're...
So there's three spots that we need to sign?
Yeah, but I think one, I don't have a line to sign on. It says, it says, it says signature of applicant, applicant's signature, and then one, the first one, I think, didn't have a line to sign on, it just had it there. So do you want me to take it back and mark those for you? And then you can sign them in there?
Signature of applying and title, that would be me, trustees.
Here then. The sheriff and private department, I know, it's all together. Doug told me today and said he was thinking of that. Something happened to him.
There you go.
Thanks.
Any more new business?
Nope.
Resolutions for consideration. If you have any more, everybody, you can help me get them, look it up.
No, you can't.
Tell me what? So, the first resolution, what I talked about, is resolution number two-two dash oh-three-two. Jefferson Township Board Trustees do hereby Larry D. Lettfield, who is our code enforcement officer. I did do a job interview with him and I was pretty well pleased with his responses and, um, he's willing to work for us for the money we stated and start as soon as possible. Any questions? I'd like to make a motion, we adopt resolution twenty-two dash oh-three-two.
Move to table twenty-two dash oh-three-two. I want to see this application.
Resolution... Two-two dash oh-three-two. Three.
Yeah.
Resolution number two-two dash oh-three-three. The Jefferson Township Board Trustees approve Charles E. Connell as part-time road department employee. He'd be an evening guy, weekends and mechanically inclined, this is what I'm doing, I'm making this decide. Any questions? I'd like to make a motion, we adopt resolution twenty-two dash oh-three-three.
Second.
Uh, can we have a roll call vote, please, Tracy?
In a minute. Trustee McLaughlin?
Yes.
Trustee McQuire?
No.
Motion doesn't pass. Okay, next one. Jefferson Township Board Trustees do hereby agree to give full-time level-two road department employee Kyle Humphries a pay increase. Got a question on this one, Jim? I did a job, I did a employee evaluation of him two days ago.
Is he expecting back pay? Because I know he was promised this and it never happened, so how, how's that gonna work?
Next page, there's another, next page, slide.
So, you guys talked all this, everything worked out that he had grievances from why he called, he reached out to me out of frustration, so you guys got all that worked out?
Mm-hmm. Go into the conversation. I'd like to make a motion, we adopt resolution twenty-two dash oh-three-four.
Second.
Roll call, please, Tracy.
Trustee McLaughlin?
Yes.
Trustee McQuire?
Yes.
Resolution carries.
Is that number thirty-four?
Yes. Okay, so next resolution, number two-two dash oh-three-five. The Jefferson Township Board Trustees authorize the Township Fire Chief to hire probationary shifted fire department paramedic, Corey Vardy, and probationary non-shifted emergency medical technician Madison Duninsky. I did have a conversation with H R in regards to the fire department and all this, everything's been done. Have you been told that, Tracy?
No, I'm not been on these papers, so I can't, um, I can't do anything with them until I get there and then I...
So you don't have files or...
No, I have none.
New hire paperwork?
Nothing.
A plea action form?
Nothing. These names are new to me.
I can give you two signals, you know, here. I don't know what the hangup was within that process, but I have it all over here.
The hangup is that you guys have to approve this first and look at those papers. I would think you guys need to look at that paper before you even bring it to the board. And so I don't know, I mean, why you use those particular words. And if all that information is not in their files, that needs to be in their files, they can't be, uh, they can't be hired on. There's a, there's a sheet in the beginning of the file that I have to have to be able to get into the paper. And so, the hangup is we have no procedures for hiring people.
Yes, we do.
Well, where are they? Because I need a copy of them. Or hire someone for H R.
Move to table.
Table it.
I mean, you're getting frustrated over things you don't do, not because I'm not doing it.
Okay, resolution two-two dash oh-three-five. The Jefferson Township Board Trustees...
Three-six.
Three-six, that's my fault, too. Three-six. Jefferson Township Board Trustees accept the resignation of road department employee Faith Vaughn for the Jefferson Township Road Department.
Second. Did you make a motion?
No, I'll make a motion, we adopt twenty-two dash oh-three-six.
Second.
Roll call, please, Tracy?
No. Um, Trustee McLaughlin?
Yes.
Trustee McQuire?
Yes.
Resolution carries.
I'm not sending you test notes on that. Thank you.
Resolution two-two dash oh-three-seven. The Jefferson Township Board Trustees accept the resignation of part-time lieutenant position from the Jefferson Township Fire Department. This Dustin Bruner resigned from his position as part-time shifted lieutenant for the Jefferson Township Park Department. This Dustin Bruner resigned from his position as part-time shifted lieutenant for the Jefferson Township Park, Department, April twenty-second. I'll make a motion, we adopt resolution twenty-two dash oh-three-seven.
Second.
Question. This, he just retired from the position as shifted lieutenant, but not from the fire department?
Why are we sending a letter of appreciation?
I'm just asking, that was a question.
Assistant office position resignation on file.
So he is retired from the fire department?
Yes, this is here, Jefferson Township Fire Department, yes. Wherever you, you read it. Last line.
It says, acceptance of their reduction and a letter of appreciation to this employee. This says reduction, doesn't say resignation. Is there a difference?
We do last sentence.
Uh, now therefore just, we set the resignation, okay? It's confusing, but, okay.
Vote please.
Doesn't have effective date. Effective April twenty-second.
It is in the first line. First sentence has a date, right?
This is just too much work, okay, I got it, so this is what I should put as a resignation date. See, yes, design to the position, okay, got it, I'm, I'm okay. Trustee McLaughlin?
Yes.
Trustee McQuaid?
Yes. Motion carries. Thanks, sir. The three resolutions we don't have.
They weren't in my packet.
Yeah.
They're on the agenda, but not in my.
So let's go along to departmental reports.
Let's back up.
Okay, good.
I think you can make a simple motion to approve the hiring of the queen crew.
And the motion to prove the cost?
You want a table up for next meeting?